My college allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Iavino.
I very much would ask the committee to join me as we pause in a moment of silence to honor the memory of our former mayor, Thomas Fallon, former member of the Malden School Committee and chairman of the Malden School Committee who passed away this past August.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. We'll go to the second item on our agenda, approval of minutes. We'll take each one separately. The first one is executive session for June 21st, 2010. I need a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Crowe, seconded by Mr. Iavino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those are approved. Second, under approval of minutes, is the regular session of June 21st, 2010. A motion to approve by Mr. Kasucci, seconded by Mr. Furio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The third item under approval of minutes is the budget hearing of June 28th, 2010. Motion by Mr. Welldie, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fourth item is the continuation of budget hearing of July 1st, 2010. A motion to accept by Ms. Crowe, seconded by Mr. Welldie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The fifth item under approval of minutes is the executive session of September 2nd, 2010. Move by Mr. Iavino, seconded by Mr. Kasucci. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And the sixth item of approval of minutes is regular session of September 2nd, 2010. A motion to approve by Mr. Kasucci, seconded by Mr. Duffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? At this point, we have opening for a public comment. Anyone want to make a comment based on the agenda of our meeting? Not seeing anyone. Mr. Furio, you want to make a motion to table public comment? Is that correct?
I'd like to make a motion to table public comment.
We have a second on Mr. Furio's motion. To within the same meeting, correct?
Yeah.
To move that item?
To move it ahead, yeah. Maybe 10 or 15 minutes because I informed somebody that we'd be starting the meeting out here at 7:00. I just want to make sure that if they show up at 7:00 that they're able to speak.
We're moving the agenda. Can we have a second on that? Anyone opposed to that? Okay, we will do that, Ms. Furio. Thank you. Superintendent's report, item number four. Turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. As with all meetings, I start out with recognizing some accomplishments of folks throughout the district. As we start the new school year, I want to set the table with some of last year's accomplishments to remember what a good year it was and to set us off on what I expect to be an equally fine year. In terms, and I'm going to just quickly go through each of the schools and then some district-wide accomplishments which I think we should all celebrate and feel good about entering this year. First of all, at BB, in terms of our end-of-year assessments, BB led all schools in the district in grade 6 in both math and in social studies. Ferryway led all schools in the district in terms of grade 2 and grade 3 passage comprehension and in terms of grade 1, 3, and 4 mathematics assessments. And in grade 8, they led the district in math and science on our end-of-year assessments. Forestale led the district in grade 2 and 5 on passage comprehension, grade 2 in mathematics, grade 7. They had a clean sweep and led the district in the English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies end-of-year assessments. The Linden led the district in grade 5 passage comprehension and in mathematics and in grades 6 and 8 in English Language Arts. The Salemwood K-4 led the district in kindergarten and first grade in fluency. And Salemwood, grades 5 through 8, led the district on the grade 6 science assessments. So I think it's important to note that each one of our schools in its own way was really outstanding and led the district in academics in some area of particular achievement. But that wasn't all, and these are some particular accomplishments that I think everybody should be celebrating. You might not know that Malden High recently was recognized by Newsweek as in the top 6% of all high schools in the United States regarding the number of low-income and minority students who are taking AP tests and who are scoring, receiving qualifying scores. They are in the top 6% of all schools in the country. In addition, the high school, over the course of the last two years, has ranked number 1 or 2 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on the increase in the number of students taking AP tests. This is of all students and the number of students receiving qualifying scores. This is an incredible accomplishment. In special education, last year, we moved from level 4 to level 1 in terms of the state designations. We went from the lowest category to the highest. It's just, that's something that's just not done very often in the Commonwealth, and I think those folks deserve recognition. We recently received recognition by the Department of Education for our English Language Learners' Services and achievement on the part of our kids. We were selected as one of six districts throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to have a case study written about our work and shared with all of the other districts in the Commonwealth. If you haven't been over to Malden High to see the new Malden Alternative High School, you should go. It is really something to behold. We have so many kids, we are recapturing, who are going to earn their high school diploma who otherwise would not. We're already brimming, we're over our current limit. We're having a meeting next week to discuss how we can expand the services. It's only three weeks old. The high school renovation has gone on spectacularly. I think Gil Bain, the folks who are in charge of it, deserve a tremendous amount of thanks and gratitude. And all of the teachers and administrators have been shifting here and to and fro for the last almost two years, and it's going on without a hitch. We received a 21st Century Classroom Grant last year. We ran a summer program that received a note of distinction from the Department of Education. The girls' and boys' basketball team last year at the high school won the MIAA Sportsmanship Award for all of the schools throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about our MCAS accomplishments. But again, I think that if we ever wonder whether or not we're doing good things here in this district, I think just this very brief list, and I could have gone on, recognizes that this is a pretty special place. So I wanted to start the year on that note. Will I move? Budget update. We will not have a budget update until October 4th when we have the monthly pie chart. It's going to be the first meeting of each month, and so all of the expenditures and encumbrances, et cetera, will be presented in the packet preceding the October 4th meeting. Opening of school. Already mentioned the high school and the renovation. It was nothing short of an outstanding opening of school. I've been at every school, visited classrooms in every single school, and I can honestly say that the classes are functioning as if it's now the beginning of November. I mean, the routines are down. I was in a 5th grade English classroom today at Ferryway, absolutely outstanding. I saw things that were going on in that class that I normally do not see happening until the first week of November. So I'm really expecting great things this year as the entire district is off on a very, very, very good note. And then, next, any questions about the opening of school? Because I know I'm now just running right through this. Anybody?
I just want to make a comment. I know often this time of year, I get a lot of constituent calls about placements, and this year, I did not get any. So I don't know how the other school committee members went, but I think to me, that's an indication that the parent information center must have worked very smoothly with the parents on things and issues didn't blow up to the extent that at least I personally was getting involved. So I think that's another compliment of how things have gone smoothly this year. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Any other questions so far for the superintendent?
Thanks for that recognition. I agree with you. The folks in the parent information center are doing a stellar job. Next item on the agenda has to do with district goals and objectives for this year. I know everybody has received a copy of these. The goals have basically remained the same. They've rolled from, actually, they've been the same for the last few years because we've wanted to emphasize continuity and consistency. We wanted to make sure that we were not the movement of the year, if you will, for all of our teachers so that they knew that the professional development that we were providing was a foundation for continued growth and continuous improvement. We did make changes in our objectives because we update them each year so that we can acknowledge the progress we've made and, according to the assessment of our results, make adjustments in terms of what our objectives need to be for the following year. So I would like to receive any feedback that you might have on anything you saw in that document or any questions. After one note, and I just want to make this note because folks have seen these GOT grit buttons and just want to make sure everybody knows what the GOT grit is about. As a district, and this came largely out of our August retreat, folks felt that, in many ways, the district almost inadvertently has been following a path of the rising tide raises all ships. You know, you've heard me talk a lot about the increase of kids who are taking AP classes, the increase of kids who are shifting into honors classes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. By the same token, we still have some rowboats withholding. We still have some kids who are resting on the sand at the bottom of the water. And we really wanted to take that on. Last year, we took it on in the area of providing academic interventions for all of our kids, and I think we did an outstanding job there. This year, we wanted to look at the particular area of generating persistence, but persistence around goals, built around goals. And what we recognize is that we have a lot of goals for our kids who are not necessarily achieving or connected, but they don't have very many goals for themselves. And that's where this grit concept came from. And this grit is actually the academic term now associated with a lot of research that has been done that has found that effort matches or exceeds talent when it comes to achievement. So if you've got a goal, you've got passion, you've got persistence, you are very likely to achieve. What's often missing is that goal. And so we've doubled our efforts this year and talked a great deal as a district as well as individual schools as to how we can go about increasing the level of grit, that kind of relentless pursuit of a goal on the part of all of our kids. And we're doing it on two levels. As whole school campaigns, each of the schools is coming up with and will have by our October leadership team meeting, a plan for how it's going to increase, generally increase persistence among all of the kids within the school. And then we, as a leadership team, have taken on what we kind of call now the 5-plus kid campaign, where each of us is going to adopt, if you will, at least five kids. And really, and these are going to be kids who we have identified as falling between the cracks for either academic, social, or emotional reasons. And we're going to really work with each of those individual kids and work very, very hard at helping them to identify their strengths, their needs, to identify some goals, to help them to self-assess progress, to map out a plan, self-assess progress, monitor that progress with them, and sustain them throughout the school year. So if you hear more about this GOT grit, I know it's grammatically improper, this is, as one of the schools has already told me, you know, that should be, we have grit rather than GOT grit. I want to remind you about the GOT Milk Campaign. This is where we picked it up from, so it's going to stay GOT grit. But if you see these buttons or you read an article, I already put one in the Malden Observer about getting grit, that's what it's about. But outside of that, if you have any feedback, questions, or whatever about any of our goals or objectives for the year, I'd really welcome that now.
Any questions for the superintendent in regards to item number four, district goals and objectives? In wondering why the school committee didn't get a GOT grit button, but that's okay.
Here in my car, if you'd like.
Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. Superintendent, these are obviously, I think, you worked really, really hard on the goals and changed them. Just kind of a couple of more clarifying questions. Is a part of the student achievement one, just the teachers and parents will be able to use the X2 Parent Portal? Is that something that we have explored? I mean, I have not really seen it.
Yeah, let me explain that because it is new and we're just introducing it, and folks will become more familiar with it. The parent portal, the X2 Parent Portal, has the potential to provide all of the data that we generate on kids, on academic achievement. And it doesn't necessarily have to be just report cards or tests, but it's right down to the assignment level on the part of a teacher. We can make that information public for teachers through the X2 Port. In other words, we can open it up and parents can have access to all of that information. We're in the process now of training people how to use it because it does take some training. Also, just even registering assignments on the portal for parents to look at takes some training. People need to figure out how to do it. It's not rocket science, but it does require some training. At the same time, I set the goal for this year that all parents will have open access to all data on kids, academic data on kids. We haven't fully discussed that as a district, either here as a committee or with the teachers and administrators, so we're going through that process this year also. So that's what the parent portal is about. And again, my goal is that parents will have open access to kids' grades, scores, what have you, be it an assessment, an assignment, a report card, you name it.
Obviously, just for their child, not like the whole?
Oh, yes, absolutely. You only have access to your own child.
And I have one other question on the last one, the personal growth and social responsibility. It's implement the new health curriculum, Great Body Shop, which is not necessarily new because we've done that before, to all students, grade KD. Is we've had these cuts, health teachers have really been cut out, and I know that Dan Keefe has been talking about using some of his staff, but I just want to see how that is implemented. Because the first time we did it, it was, you know, some, it really went well, some it didn't go well, and we don't really have health teachers.
Right. Well, we wanted to make sure that no one was excluded from its implementation, so physical education teachers, in addition to health teachers, are teaching it. And so depending upon the school, because the schedules are a little bit different, it may be, it's a certain number of days a month now, I've forgotten, I should remember, but a certain number of days each month, the health curriculum is offered to kids in their, through their PE class. Kids who are taking health classes have a different layout where they're getting it in much, much greater depth and consistency over the course of the entire year. So we just, we wanted to make sure that we at least put a dent in that because everybody's been crying for it, and that's our effort to do so this year.
Right. And I really do appreciate that, at least try and be creative and take a step towards trying to get more health into the curriculum. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Iavino.
Mr. Smith, just a quick question or two on a couple of things that were in the report on the X2. That would also include attendance information.
Absolutely, and we already report that. Yep.
With regard to, you mentioned in the report on page 12, section telling about bullying prevention and integrating that with the, you know, the health teachers and the Great Body Shop. Are there any programs that are going to be used that have been decided upon with specific reference to, for example, at the middle school level, the Second Step Program and the elementary grades, K-3, K-4, the Open Circle? Do you know if those are going to be?
Yeah, well, we have the Steps to Success, which is also mentioned, and we discussed this, we discussed what we could really take on this year. Steps to Success, which is related to that, is being implemented in grades 5 through 8 through the guidance department. Also, WIDICO Side-by-Side Training, which also covers those topics plus many, many, many others, but particularly with our kids in the IM program, has been expanded from the BB to the Linden this year. So those are the two major efforts in that area. We did also discuss a K-4 program but didn't have the capacity or the funds really to be able to implement it fully this year, but that's on the table, we're thinking about it for next year.
One other question, if I might. At the end of the report, you talk about financial resources development. And you said that the district will explore and implement strategies to generate additional resources, including fees and branding opportunities. Could you expand upon that just a little, please?
Yeah, that came up largely because of the, you know, strike that we found ourselves in, you know, this last spring in terms of revenues. What we're going to do is to, at the very least, research what the, what opportunities other districts are taking advantage of in the areas of, I'm sorry, fees and branding so that we have a package to present to the school committee to consider. Should we want to, should we, I in this case, want to present that to you as something worth considering? I know, or I believe that there was some vote taken on fees in the past, you know, to not have fees in the district. We may choose to continue to do that, but I at least want to have the research done so that we have data to present to you for your consideration should we decide to entertain that.
And just one quick final question, and I dealt with the minutes, and I thought I would take the opportunity now. On the minutes of 6:21, we talked about the, we approved the wellness program, the program that was developed, and they said that there would be considerations made using, considering the use of gluten-free options. Can you check with Mrs. McGuire, Cafeteria Director, and find out if that is still ongoing for any child who may have a severe allergy to whole grain or wheat or whatever?
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. Any other questions? Mr. Welldie.
Superintendent Smith, just two clarifying questions. One, kind of piggybacking off of what Mrs. Crowe said about X2 in relation to parents when we've seen their own child, for teachers as well, will the teachers' views on X2 be limited to the students that they have enrolled in their classes, not other students in their building?
No, they have access only to their own students, great.
Okay. And my second question is kind of building off what Mr. Iavino had mentioned, you know, and I know that you'll talk about this a little more, I think, under number seven, but with the, with the implementation of some of the new programs in the 5 to 8 for the bullying prevention, I know one of the things that we had stressed coming out of committee for the bullying prevention report was the use of tools in the K-4 side. So I was just curious to see sort of, you know, what approach you think you're going to end up taking next year, as well as will anything sort of be done this year to complement what's going on in 5 through 8?
It's not that we're not doing anything this year. Great Body Shop now has a bullying prevention module in it, so we are using Great Body Shop to provide bullying prevention training to kids in K through 8. It's, you know, the decision to even do additional work, not just on bullying, but on a lot of social development that we're considering a more expansive effort.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Any other questions before we move on? Item number five, Superintendent, MCAS preliminary report.
I've provided each of you with an overview of the MCAS results, and I would just ask that you, for reference, take hold of the document that says, "Malden Public Schools' MCAS Summer Years Report, September 20th, 2010." I'm not going to run through all of the data in that, but I certainly want to entertain any questions that you have about it. But I would like to highlight the key points that I also included in my narrative report to you last week, and they are as follows. In terms of students passing in English Language Arts and Mathematics, 88% of our students passed the ELA assessment as compared to 92% of the students across the state. And 80% of our students passed math as compared with 85% of the students across the state. In terms of growth, and I think these are very, very particularly important and positive statistics, while the district is three points behind the state in English Language Arts in grade 3, the district is four points ahead of the district, I'm sorry, ahead of the state by grade 10. So a change of seven points, where we are, as I said, behind by three points in grade 3 but ahead by four, by grade 10. In mathematics, while the district is five points behind the state in grade 3 in terms of kids passing, but by the time we reach grade 10, we are two points behind. We haven't entirely closed the gap, but we've closed it somewhat, and I think that that's an important accomplishment to note. Now, in terms of our students scoring at proficient or advanced, scores improved on six out of seven grades in English Language Arts by an average of three points. Across the state, there was no change in English Language Arts, students scoring at proficient or advanced. Scores also improved in six out of seven grades in mathematics by an average of 6.3 points. Scores across the state improved in five out of seven grades by an average of three points. So in both ELA and math, we closed the gap with the state by three points last year. And again, pointing out growth statistics, while the district is 17 points behind the state in ELA in grade 3, by grade 10, we closed the gap to one point, a change of 16 points. In mathematics, while the district is 12 points behind the state in math in grade 3, we closed the gap to three points by grade 10, a close of nine points. Again, both of these, I think, are significant statements about what our, how our kids are learning a great deal, not only here in relation to their peers, but also in relation to likely situated students across the state. The scores in four schools improved, and again, this is in the area proficient and advanced. The scores of four schools improved in ELA. BB went up seven points to 62% of the students. Ferry went up five points to 59%. Forestale went up two points to 58. Malden High went up two points to 77% of the students in ELA scoring at proficient or advanced. One school stayed the same, that Salemwood, remained at 45%, and one school did dip by three points, that was Linden, but they still maintained 62% of their kids scoring at proficient or advanced in English Language Arts. In mathematics, all of the schools improved in mathematics. BB went up six points to 51%. Ferryway went up six points to 50%. Forestale went up six points to 44. Linden went up six points to 51%. Salemwood up three points to 36%. And Malden High went up six points to 72% of their students in grade 10 scoring at proficient or advanced. Again, I think that this is very good data. What you have witnessed over the course of the last four years or so is steady growth in each of the schools. Yes, occasionally, there's a dip in one area or another, but it's good growth. In terms of science and technology, students passing, 83% of our students passed in science and technology in grade 5 as compared with 89% of the students across the state. 74% of our students passed science and technology in grade 8 as compared with 81% of students across the state. In terms of proficient or advanced, the gap between our district and the state was 42% to 53%. And proficient, that was at grade 5. In grade 8, the gap is 29% to 40% across the state. Again, I think you see that the scores are lower in science and technology than in the other subject areas, but also MCAS has counted, if you will, you know, for fewer years. I think both on the state level and our level, we're going to need, and we will see that we ramp up in that area. In regards to our accountability, our AYP status, and again, we've witnessed this for the last couple of years, and it's been the case, our scores did not sufficiently improve to meet AYP in many areas largely because one or more subgroups didn't make AYP, though there are some notable distinctions. Ferryway made AYP in mathematics, in the aggregate, and with all of the subgroups, as did the high school. In regards, and also, I just need to make note, and I made this note last year, that across the state, this is the same dynamic. Right now, 57% of the district... Right now, fifty-seven percent of the districts and schools across the state are not making AYP. And a lot of that, as you all know, speaks to the rigor of MCAS and our standards. In regards to our performance ratings, there are six different performance ratings, and where each school gets a rating in English Language Arts and in math. And in thirteen out of fourteen areas, our schools were rated in the top three of those six areas. And only one out of fourteen where we rated below that, and that was the fourth category, nobody scored in the, in the bottom two. And that fourth category, where we've got a low performance rating in math at Salem. Other than that, all of our scores were moderate, high, or very high, our performance ratings. And our improvement ratings, if you notice in the grid, all of our schools scored, were basically on target or improved above target. In most cases, we had some no change, and we had one improved below target. But again, we did not have any schools that were scoring below target in regards to our improvement score. So I think, again, these are, are healthy indicators that we're moving in the right direction. And again, in closing, I just want to reflect that I think where we see difficulties, they are pretty much shared by the state. Where we see growth, are, the gap between us and the state is actually closing, and it's closing in ELA and in math. And I feel, I feel good about, about our scores. Obviously, we always, always, you know, seek to do even better, but I think, I think we have lots to be proud of here. So I welcome any comments, questions, feedback.
Any questions, Mr. Furrow, on the left?
Yes, Sid, just one, one question on the science and technology. Did it, I know only one of our, one of our K through eight schools has tech ed, a tech ed program, right?
That's right.
Were their scores any higher than the other four schools?
Yeah, actually, the fair, I'll give you those scores now. For proficient and advanced, Ferryway scored, actually, it was not higher than all of them. Linden had the highest score in grade five. But in terms of passing, Ferryway was significantly higher in grade five. Ferryway had ninety-one percent. The next highest was Linden at eighty-five. So they were higher in passing, but they were not higher, let's see, I'll tell you, in terms of grade five, they were tied for second.
Is that because Linden has the advanced class?
I would say the Linden, yeah, right, that is certainly influenced by having the Gifted and Talented Program, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Winslow.
Yeah, I just, I noticed that there seem to be, the biggest dips of all for grades seem to be in fourth grade, both in ELA and math. And I didn't know if that's a particular, any particular explanation or thoughts on that. I mean, is it just, I mean, overall, the progress does appear to go up over time, but there seems to be a little blip there. Just curious, is it, if you had any thoughts on that?
Well, I have, what I can share is that, you know, we talked a lot about this at the Urban Superintendents Meeting last, last Friday. This is the second year in a row where this has happened in grade four, where consistently across the state, where we see dips, it is in grade four. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the assessment, whether it's the nature of the assessment in grade four, whether there's a sliver of content in grade four that we're all just not doing well on across the Commonwealth, there's a little bit of befuddlement on our part. But it doesn't take away from the fact that when we, when I talked to the, you know, and we talked with principals and directors and what have you, we need to redouble our efforts in grade four. We can, be honest with you, we can't figure out precisely what the problem is, but we're all experiencing it, but it doesn't mean that we don't have to go after it.
Thank you. Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a comment. Actually, it really is, should be congratulations to you, your staff, and the teachers really for making these changes. Obviously, there's still work to be done, but we've made some really significant changes. And I really did want to actually point out Ferryway, who was the first of our schools that was really on the downward trajectory, and, you know, really pulled together and turned that around, now they're on target. I think that's pretty incredible, because they came from, you know, what's going to happen here, it's going to be taken over, because we weren't really making some progress there, but really, you know, turned things around. And so I think, just really a credit to Mr. DeVito and his staff, but obviously, to Sid and his leadership for being able to turn some of these things around, so.
I appreciate that. I do, I do want to kind of, kind of give a second round of kudos to Ferryway, though, too, and make note that, if folks did notice, Ferryway did make AYP in the aggregate for both ELA and for mathematics. And in fact, they made AYP for all subgroups in mathematics, and they made, in English Language Arts, they made AYP for all subgroups except for limited English proficient students and Asian. And I think at Ferryway, there's a crosswalk between those two. But I agree, Tom DeVito, his staff deserve a real, real round of applause for their work.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Iavino.
Just Superintendent Smith, again, it's, it's a credit to the leadership of the school, leadership of the teachers, the hard work that they have done, and the fact that the children are really beginning to toe the mark and, and concerned and consistent with their progress. It's, it's interesting, because I think it was yesterday's Globe, and I can't remember what section, maybe it was the, obviously, the education section, where they talked about the same thing, but if you read the headline, just the headline, how deceiving it is, what did it say? Fifty-seven percent of the schools failed to make progress according to MCAS reports. But inside the numbers, it's not the schools, it's not, it's, it's individual subgroups. And they don't, you don't get into that information until the third or fourth paragraph of the story. So I would encourage people to read that to get a full understanding of what these scores truly mean.
I'm glad you raised that, because it's also fifty-seven percent of the students who are in the state with the highest standards and the most rigorous tests. You know, were we in, I'm not going to pick on any particular state, but were we in, in many, many, many other states, that number, the headline would be, only our students are the best in the country.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. Any other questions or comments on item number five? I just asked the superintendent something to, if he could, over the next few weeks or months, maybe give us a summary, because every meeting we hear, and we get every year, especially the last three years, you've given us great numbers. I'm wondering if you could give us, almost like a superintendent summary of a page or two that we could send out to our constituents, to the newspapers, that Malden was here in 2007, and Malden is now here. And with that, I'd like to see demographics. You know, Malden has grown from X percent of free and reduced lunch, or any type of obstacles you think as an educator that the teachers have to, and the staff, deal with every day. Because percentages are one thing, but it'd be nice to get, even if you work with the Malden Education Association or your leadership team on where Malden really is, so we can let people know that our schools, despite budget woes across the Commonwealth and the country, we're still making improvements despite what AYP defines it as, or things like that. So at your leisure, I'd appreciate that, just as one member, and please.
Well, I can have that for the meeting on the fourth.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Item number six is Race to the Top. We're in, we will be in receipt for a little more information, is that correct, Superintendent?
Right, I can, and I can pass that out now, but I know that, just so you have it on, in hand.
The superintendent has given, in the, in the packet sent to the public, some information on Race to the Top, which there's a deadline of October 22nd to submit to the state, some of the steps we'll take. But the superintendent also was able to, just a little while ago today, give us some more information that we'll be making available in the city clerk's office or the school department's office. So because of that, we'd like to table Race to the Top's discussion, if a member would be so kind to.
Make a motion to table until the October 4th meeting?
Ms. Crowe is making a motion to table Race to the Top once the committee has a good two weeks to, and if any more information superintendent comes, Mr. Anzio could send it out. I think it would give us a better understanding of this so important source of funding. That was seconded by Mr. Iavino. So we'll table that, if, all those in favor of tabling it to October 4th public meeting? Anyone opposed to that? Okay, thank you.
Can I make a footnote on that, just so folks who may be listening in or in the audience know, is that we do have a proposal due to the state on October 22nd. We will still move forward with educating all of the different constituent groups in the district, plow the particular initiatives, put together a team that will include union representation, representation of principals, directors, teachers, also the school committee. I thank Ms. Crowe for willingness to do that, so that we can get the ball rolling, even though we're going to wait until next meeting to go, to do a more thorough overview of our TTT.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next item in the superintendent's report, bullying prevention number seven.
Just wanted to mention that in, in the area of bullying prevention, we've, in addition to integrating the bullying into the curriculum, as I had said before, through Great Body Shop, we have also have an orientation that is provided to each of the teachers, I should say, all of the staff in the district. Each staff member signs off upon their completion of the orientation. That data goes to Assistant Superintendent Casabian, so that we are assured that in every building, every, every staff member of every building, as well as the central office, as well as bus drivers, custodians, you name it, everybody needs, has to sign off on having received that orientation, and that will be completed, is it by the end of this month? Is that correct? Yeah, by the end of this month. We gave, and in addition to that, each of the, we gave a very, a quick orientation at the beginning of the year. Each principal's addressed it in each of their buildings, so that there was an overview, but there's the more substantial orientation that everybody must individually complete by September. We also, by the end of the year, by December 30th, we have to submit our plan, our bullying prevention plan to the state. We intend to do so. We already have our, our bullying policy in place, but that will be reviewed between now and then. And I expect to call on some members of the, of the committee to join with me in putting together that process to ensure that by the 30th, we not only have a revised plan, if we need revisions, I'm sorry, a revised policy, but we also have the other elements of a full plan for the Department of Education.
If anyone on the committee is interested, one or two members, please contact the superintendent. It's not a separate subcommittee, correct Superintendent?
Right.
It's just an advisory of some type, so.
That's right. And did you, I'm sorry, did you say September 30th? September 30th, everybody has to have the orientation completed. I would hope that folks could get in touch with me, anybody who's interested over the course of the next week, so that I can put together at least some planning teams so they can look at policy and, and other elements of the plan.
Thank you. Any questions on bullying, Mr. Welldie?
My only question, first, a quick comment to thank the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Casabian for really getting this out there and making sure that all the staff members in the district were given the policy, given the training, because that's a big step. It's a very big step. And we worked very hard in putting that policy together with, with staff members from the district, so it's good to see that they're able to sort of share their work with their peers as well. My only question is, what, have we done anything with the students regarding the policy yet? I know that throughout the process of crafting the policy, there were a lot of suggestions made as to how, how we could get this information into the students. I know that the Rich Bransfield, the assistant principal at BB, was very, a very active member of the committee, and he was very, he was a proponent, proponent of the idea of getting the assistant principals into classrooms to talk to students about bullying, about the policy, about repercussions and whatnot. Has anything been done? I know it's only been a short amount of time since school started, but I know in, in Mr. Bransfield's idea, it was all supposed to be happening within the first week, a week or two of school, so I'm just curious to see if anything sort of happened with that.
Something happened in each school during the first week in terms of an, an initial orientation to the policy being, being given to the students. The assistant principals actually meet together as a group and are meeting tomorrow, even tomorrow, right, to make decisions about what we're going to do over the course of the next month or so.
Great.
Carry that through even further.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. Any other questions? Okay, last item on the superintendent's report, Public Relations Report.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry. I had, I believe in your packet, you got a copy of our, now I'm looking for it, the calendar of, you didn't?
No, no calendar.
Okay.
The copy you've gotten, great.
Okay, then, then I didn't get it to you. I have it, I will email it to you, but let me tell you what it is. We, we are submitting two articles each month to the Malden Observer as part of our own kind of public relations campaign. I submitted two before, right around the opening of school. BB School was first on the, on the list, and I know Sue Vatalaro submitted hers last week. Each school and each director has taken a date, and so, and it's been divided, you know, two dates each month from now until the end of the school year. I will make a point to get that calendar emailed to you, so if you want to, you know, have a conversation with a particular school, or school person, or director, you know who's, who's up next.
Superintendent, would you also make a copy available at the city clerk's office and the central school office as well?
We will do that.
Any questions on public relations? Mr. Winslow.
Yeah, I would encourage that, it'd be, also go to the, the Evening News as well as The Advocate, and, and if we can post something on our, our website after those have been published, take it on an ongoing basis, would be sensible as well. Thank you.
Good point, thank you, Mr. Winslow. Mr. Welldie?
I really want to commend the superintendent for being very receptive to this idea in the beginning, and you really took the bull by the horns and put a whole year's worth of scheduling right up front. And, you know, the, those articles, the ones that have come out, both of yours and Sue's this past Friday, they were great. I've heard a lot of good feedback from parents about how they liked the, especially your, your initial intro, the opening of school letter. The only complaint that I've heard, and I shared this with you in the beginning, was they wanted to know why it was so far in the back of the newspaper, and why it wasn't more, more close to the front page, and, and I pursued that, and so hopefully we'll hear from someone, push it forward, because they are great, and it's a good way to sort of keep in contact with, with the community and share the good things that are going on, which don't always get shared. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Welldie. No questions, Ms.? All right, that's it for superintendent reports. We'll go back to item number three, which is public comment. Anyone out there would like to make a comment on our agenda, please state your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Ziber, 86 Florence Street, Malden. Hope we had a good summer. I'm actually here to, actually, for a concern I have. I was speaking with one of my son's teachers recently at the, at the Linden School, and I was told that three of the five schools did not have certain books for math, and they hadn't even been ordered out at the time I spoke to the teacher. They were missing a book, a, a practice workbook used for homework, and a lessons book used for classroom. And as a parent, we weren't notified by the school, or by anybody actually, by letter, by phone call. And that's a concern, that there was lack of communication, that it's now almost a month into the school year, when our kids, at least the three of the schools I was told, don't have two essential books for math. Now, this should have been actually rectified probably day one, back in August, when school started, when you knew at that point in time that there wasn't the books. And I did call my, my counselor, and John got on it, he made some phone calls, and I found they were just ordered last week, which is three weeks into the school year, which is a concern as to why it took so long. I've heard three different versions of why it took so long, but they've been ordered, which is the, which is the good thing, but the fact is that no administration at the school had let the parents know that the books, that the students didn't have these books. And that's what I find more appalling, that the leadership at the school is not either advising the superintendent's office, or someone's not advising the parents that, hey, you're now a month into school and the kids don't have books. Now, they've been getting many copies of the pages, but- Now, they've been getting many copies of the pages, but the book had other things other than the actual work has to be done, and the kids didn't have it. So my concern and my question actually is, or may not question, but a comment is that I hope the superintendent can speak to the principals, the administration at the school to have them let the parents, or contact the parents when there's an issue regarding their students, their, their kids, as to missing supplies, such as textbooks, which hadn't been ordered three weeks into the school system. I think that's a problem. Why it took so long to rectify an issue that should have been known back in August when school started? School started the end of August, we're now September 20th, and the books aren't there. They were just ordered last week, which had been about the 17th. Now we're going to week four, they don't have the books. And other than the fact that whoever dropped the ball, whoever didn't put the, whoever didn't put the order in, or the money, the issue was also is, why weren't we notified as parents that the school doesn't have these books for the kids? And that's more of my concern. I know the books are going to be there soon. I spoke with Mr. Frario, he told me he spoke with other people, and the books have been ordered. But the fact is that we're not getting the information from the administration at the school is an issue. And it's not just this, it's other things that have gone on that parents haven't been notified about. So I stress, and I, my concern is that I hope that the superintendent and the staff will speak to the principals, and speak to the staff, and say, if there's an issue, parents need to be notified of this as soon as possible, either by a phone call, because I've gotten plenty of phone calls about various issues throughout the summer, whether it's things at the high school, whether it's something from the superintendent about different things going on. That missing books that our kids need should be one of the, at least a, a letter or an email that goes out from somebody, saying, hey, we're working on it, this is what's happening, but we're going to get them there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We would ask the superintendent to follow up on that.
Would you like a?
No.
Okay.
If you would contact Ms. Iavino at your convenience. Next items on the agenda, actually, public comment is still open for anyone who would like to address the committee. In CNN, that section is closed. Item number five, which is deliberations. First item under deliberations, renaming of the Malden Alternative High School by Mr. Iavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, Superintendent Smith and the subcommittee were involved in a committee to study the continuation, the expansion of the vocational program at Malden High School. And during one of the meetings, this is not my idea, but I will be happy, more than happy to bring it forward, Mr. Bazanotti, who was in the tech ed department, suggested that the Malden High, Malden Alternative High School be named for, in the name of Mr. William J. Minnie, to become known henceforth as the William J. Minnie Learning Academy. I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it's a wonderful thing. Mr. Minnie, for those of us who, who knew him, and for those of us who may not be familiar with him, gave nearly 50 years of public service to the city of Malden as a teacher, as a member of this school committee for 18 years, as a aide in two mayoral administrations, and as one who was very, very much involved in local issues. So I would put forward the renaming of the Malden Alternative High School to be henceforth known as the William J. Minnie Learning Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. Any questions or comments? Mr. Fur.
I'd like to speak about Mr. Minnie, the gentleman that this school would be named after. I worked, taught with him at Malden High School. Some of the things that he, he was involved in, he was the president of the, the Malden High School Band Parents Association, did a lot of work for that organization. If you look to the right of the high school, there's a, there's a city seal that's up there. When they, when they tore down the old brick building that used to be the Malden Vocational School, Mr. Minnie himself took on the task to save that, that seal was up on the school building. And he took, took time to make sure that they packed, brought this, that seal down, put it together, and stored it down the city yards until this, the A building was, was built, and then had it re, then further classes raised money to have it put where it is now. Besides that, besides that, Mr. Iavino, Iavini mentioned different, other, other different things that Mr. Minnie was involved in. He has done a lot for the city of Malden, a lot of people, a lot of things that people don't even know about. I worked in, as a, as a graphic arts teacher at the high school, and a few years back, maybe 10 years ago, Mr. Minnie was one of the gentlemen to come up with the idea of giving World War II veterans that left high school to go, go fight Forrest during the Second World War, and they never got their diploma. He worked tireless, tireless hours, just putting together a book with pictures of all these gentlemen, and when they served, and so forth and so on, and they had a ceremony in the auditorium. So it's well-deserving for, to name something after Mr. Minnie. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Iavino.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. Just as a quick comment from the chair, I would think the, the proper thing to do was, would be to refer Mr. Iavino's idea to, to policy, because there is a policy in renaming buildings and stuff like that. We could open it up to the public, of course. We, we encourage opening up to the public, especially Mr. Minnie's former students, which I'm sure there are many out there. And just to open some dialogue on this before it's brought to a vote, so if that's okay with Mr. Iavino, if he'd like to make a motion to refer this.
I'll make a motion to refer that to policy.
Do you want to comment before the motion, Mr. Winslow?
Yeah. My, my question is, I just, I want to check the policy manual to see if, if the appropriate, whether it's building and grounds would normally review that or make a recommendation.
There is a, there is a policy, when I was on policy, cheering it, there was, when we read did the manual, there is something about renaming buildings need the authorization of the school committee. So if you want to start it in policy, at least we'll give it some chance to open up to the public at large.
Yeah, no, that's fine, fine, however the committee wants to do that, I'm, I'm fine. And I think it's a, it's a wonderful suggestion, knowing Mr. Minnie's long work with the schools here. It's an outstanding suggestion, so thank you.
Thank you. So on a motion made by Mr. Iavino to refer it to policy, seconded by Mr. Furio, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to refer to policy? Second item on the deliberations, subcommittee updates. Anyone have subcommittee updates at this point that they would like to share? Not seeing any. We'll take that up on October 4th. Third item, consent agenda from executive session. And the first item, let me check. The first, the first one is the contract for the principal of the Ferryway School. Do I have a motion to approve that contract? Motion by Ms. Crowe, seconded by Mr. Furio, would you call the roll, Ms. Ronzio?
Mr. Kasucci?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Frario?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Mr. Altrino?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Motion passes. The second in the consent agenda is the contract for the assistant superintendent of schools. A motion by Mr. Weldy to accept, seconded by Mr. Iavino. Ms. Ronzio, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kasucci?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Frario?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Mr. Altrino?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
That passes. The third and final one is a, for three separate administrators and the central office, a motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Duffy, seconded by Ms. Crowe. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kasucci?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Frario?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes.
Mr. Altrino?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Thank you. That clears the docket. Now we'll turn over to personal privilege, if anyone will start with Ms. Crowe.
I just want to invite everybody to, actually, on Saturday is the Harvest Moon Festival from the Oak Grove Improvement Association and the Chinese Cultural Connection hosts that. It's at the Belsmere Pond, up near, well, beyond the pond. It's from 10 to 4:00, and after, at Ryan's Family Amusement, Councilor Christensen, the PTO at the Ferryway School, myself, are hosting our, I think it's like our sixth or seventh annual back-to-school bowling. So we hope people come down, that's 5 to 7:00. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Duffy?
I would just like to congratulate everyone in the BB community on a successful school opening. Everything has been proceeding very smoothly around the school. As you may remember, we changed the traffic patterns last year. It's made it much more safe, which everyone appreciates greatly. And then we've also been trying to deal with the difficulty of all the parking in the area, but working in conjunction with the Malden Police Department and the parents at the PTO, the PTO and the parents. We have come up with some stop-gap measures that seem to be working well. So again, I'd like to encourage everyone to keep following what we've been doing, because it has been working, and thank everyone for a smooth and successful opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Iavino?
Again, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Duffy said about a good, smooth opening at all of the schools. It's very heartwarming and, and good to know that things went as smoothly as they did. Again, the Harvest Moon Festival, there will be a table there manned by youngsters from Malden High School, Malden High School Key Club. So the citizens of Malden can come by and, and find out exactly the good things that the Key Club is involved in, many, many good ventures with their new advisor, Ms. Shereen Eskivitz. Also, we need to give a shout-out, John, you had mentioned that Bill worked very hard in that diplomas for the World War II vets have to give a shout-out to Ann Madigan also, who worked very, very closely with Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. To my left, anyone? Mr. Winslow for? Mr. Weldy? Don't all fight now.
Two quick items. One is Malden, Malden Access Television, who taped all of our school committee meetings, including the one that's happening right now, is having their annual celebration and meeting this Thursday, September 23rd, from 6:00 till about 9:00 at the Senior Center, right out on Pleasant Street. The theme this year is "Art Rages," so they invite all members of the community to come and attend. And the second item is I'd like to extend an invitation to all Ward Five members, that Councilor Murphy and I will be hosting the next Ward Five Community Meeting, Thursday, September 30th, at 6:30 PM at the Forestale School. We'll have representatives from the fire department, the city controller, and the police chief will be there to talk about the budget and other community issues, so we invite you to, invite you to join us at the Forestale School, Thursday, the 30th, at 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Mr. Winslow, you also said. Just a quick note from the chair, I want to thank Superintendent Smith and the entire faculty and staff and parents, city council members and taxpayers for getting us through another difficult fiscal year last year, and, and working with us, especially members of the Malden Education Association. The stuff that Superintendent Smith tells us during these meetings about smooth openings and MCAS results are only as good as what goes on in the classrooms, and the support that the teachers get from the parents and the, and guardian, so. But I want to thank members of City Hall, the mayor and his team as well, for continuing to place Malden Public Schools at, at a priority. That's how we get things done. But again, it all starts in the classroom, as many of us here are educators and work with the community, we know how important that is. So there are all great things that are happening, we have room to grow, and, but I want to thank the superintendent and his entire team and for doing a great job. So we'll take a motion to adjourn if nothing else. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Furio, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.